Good afternoon and welcome to our 20th September 2017 Commission Meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Asturian, Lee.
Here.
Manukian.
Present.
Saturian.
Here.
And Shahbazian.
Very good. May I have a report regarding the posting of the agenda?
Yeah, the agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, September 13, 2017, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you very much. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good. Moving on to approving of the minutes. We're going to go to the August 16, 2017 minutes. Are there any changes or can we entertain the motion?
I move. Take us up.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Saturian is seconded. Planning Commissioners Lee.
Aye.
Saturian. And Chairperson Manukian.
Yes. For the record, we will go about approving or evaluating the minutes for the April 19, 2017 regular meeting at another time when we have all of our members present. Item number five, oral communications discussions, limited to items, not part of the agenda for today. Each speaker is limited to five minutes. The Commissioners may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. Seeing no cards, we will move to item number six, zoning appeals. We have none. Planning Commission items, old business, none. New business. This will be a citywide matter. The applicant is the city of Glendale and the staff reporting will be by Justin Robertson. Please proceed.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. The Community Development Department, working with our consultant Nelson Nygaard, have drafted a citywide pedestrian plan that we've brought before you this afternoon for your review and comment. We've been working on this since 2015 and what you see before you, what you received in your packets, is based on extensive public input and a data-driven analysis of pedestrian collision hotspots in the city, as well as a comprehensive review of the city's existing policies and programs in light of best practices elsewhere. This is an informational presentation to you only. We're asking solely for your comments, not necessarily a formal recommendation to the City Council. This more or less begins the public review process for this draft plan. We're coming to you first and so we're glad for the opportunity. And I'm going to turn things over to our consultant. This is Jennifer Wieland from Nelson Nygaard. And as she comes up to the podium, I just want to recognize Fred Zoravend here, our Senior Planner for Transportation, and Arzu Kamali, Planning Assistant. And we are the city's side of the project team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Justin, and good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, my name is Jennifer Wieland. I'm with Nelson Nygaard. We're a transportation planning firm and have had the good fortune of working with the city of Glendale on this project for about the last year and a half. As Justin mentioned, today is a huge milestone in terms of having completed the draft plan and being ready to have the public review it. And so I'm going to run pretty quickly through the contents of the draft plan, hitting some of the highlights in terms of what are the challenges that we're facing in Glendale when it comes to pedestrian safety and people walking? And what are the solutions that we propose to address those challenges? So to begin, in your packets, you have a very large document called Taking Steps, which is really part two of the pedestrian plan. You also have a much shorter executive summary, which I will refer to a couple of times during the course of the presentation. I promise you, I am not going to read that whole gigantic document to you this evening. There is a complement to this, which is really the first phase of the project, called Taking Stock. And what that chapter of the plan did is really identify the challenges, the successes, the policy and plans that guide our work on the pedestrian plan, focused in on collision analysis and demographics. And then also, as Justin mentioned, look at what some of your peer cities are doing to improve pedestrian safety. So that report exists on the city's website. People can find it at BStreetSmartGlendale.com. But today, we're going to focus on where do we go with that information? And building to the projects, the programs and policies, and the phasing and priorities that will dictate how the city moves forward to improve pedestrian safety. I want to take a second to acknowledge the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee. This is a group of about 25 individuals who worked with us over the course of developing the second half of the pedestrian plan. The participants in the Pedestrian Safety Advisory Committee included city departments, members of the commissions, and stakeholders. And they met 10 times throughout the course of the project, providing advice on a monthly basis as we developed a prioritization process for the plan, ultimately developed projects, and then helped to guide what our recommendations are. So I really want to acknowledge the tremendous impact that they've had on helping to shape the plan and just, again, appreciate their contribution to this. So where did we begin? I'm going to take you back for just a quick second to think through some of the information that was in the Taking Stock report to set the foundation for what we've done here. But because we are at the Planning Commission, I want to acknowledge a lot of the strong planning work that's been done in Glendale and how that has guided some of what we've done in the pedestrian plan. The downtown-specific plan is, in many ways, the foundation for a lot of this work. That plan identifies pedestrian priority streets, talks about the need for the downtown mobility study, which then was the first place, really, that a pedestrian plan was mentioned. So that downtown-specific plan and the focus on strengthening the city's ped and bike and transit networks was very critical. The Pedestrian Safety Task Force, then, in 2014, was a group that helped to look at how the city had been moving forward to implement the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, which was developed in 2011. And a lot of what came out of that task force was the realization that there was good work done in the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. The city just hadn't quite had the momentum it needed to be able to implement all of those recommendations. So we used a lot of those as the starting place for our work. And then you all are quite familiar, I'm sure, with the South Glendale Community Plan and the work that the city has underway there. Throughout the development of the pedestrian plan, we've been ensuring consistency with the South Glendale plan. So the projects that we identify in the pedestrian plan that fall within the South Glendale Study area are consistent and have been evaluated through that process as well. So I want to acknowledge that the city of Glendale has done a tremendous amount to make the city a great place to walk and has worked hard to improve pedestrian safety. That includes a really robust Safe Routes to School program that has made improvements at nearly every school in Glendale. There is good sidewalk coverage around the city. Most of your arterial streets and most of your collector's streets do have sidewalks. You have some really pleasant places to walk as well, some beautiful streetscapes. And there's the new Be Street Smart Glendale campaign, which has been, I think, really informative in educating people about how they use the road and how we share the road. So all of that is good and is a strong foundation for our work. There are, of course, challenges. And so that's really what we want to focus on in terms of how we're shaping our solutions. And first and foremost among those is safety. So in the first phase of the plan, we did a really robust collision analysis to take a look at what the trends are year over year. How many people are being hit? How many pedestrians are being hit each year in Glendale? How severe are the injuries? How many fatalities are we seeing? Are we seeing? And are there groups that are overrepresented in the data? What we found, and what this graph is showing you, is between the years of 2003 and, or I'm sorry, 2004 and 2013, we have also looked at more current data. But what we saw over those years was that about 100 people each year are hit while walking in Glendale. The number of fatalities changes a little bit from year to year, but 40% of the fatalities that happen in the city of Glendale are people walking. And, you know, a lot of that is that pedestrians are the least protected. And if you are hit while walking, especially as speeds increase, your chance of severe injury or death dramatically increases. So even though this graph is not showing you the numbers from 2014 and 2015, the trends held pretty much the same. We also then looked at who is being hit. And what we saw is that older and younger pedestrians in Glendale are really overrepresented in the collision data. So what this graph is showing you, the blue dots show you where the Glendale population lies. So the percentage of Glendale population. The red bars show you the collisions. So when you see a red bar that goes well beyond the blue dot, that is telling you that that age group is overrepresented. And so you see that in the 10 to 14 and 15 to 19, so some of our young people, our teenagers, are overrepresented. They are hit more often than their share of the population. The same is true for our older adults, people 65 and older. So that really was important in starting us thinking about who do we need to target? The next piece of the collision analysis was looking at locations. Where are collisions happening? In Glendale, we have about 40% of pedestrian collisions happening at signalized intersections. So that means another 60% are happening either mid-block, so between intersections, or at an unsignalized intersection. Most of the collisions happen on arterial streets, so places where you have four or more lanes of traffic. The biggest numbers in terms of collisions are when vehicles are turning left and when vehicles are turning right at an intersection. Those are the most common times for someone to be hit. So that piece is really important as we start to think about how do we develop solutions? How do we develop projects that are going to address some of those challenges? The next piece was, the next piece was, apologies, I just flipped my slides. So all of that looking at the very specific locations, we also rolled it up to say citywide. Which intersections are we seeing the most collisions happen at? And what corridors have the most collisions? When you look at a corridor, you're really able to string together a series of factors that are likely at play. And what we found is the corridors that you see outlined on this map, so that's 17 corridors. Those 17 corridors account for 40% of the pedestrian collisions in Glendale. Similarly, well, and those 17 corridors are just 2% of your overall street network. So just about nine miles. So that tells us a couple of things. These are important corridors. There are a lot of people traveling on those corridors. And so, you know, there's the likelihood of greater numbers of incidents. But what it's also telling you is that if you focus resources on these 17 corridors, you have the real ability to make a significant impact in the number of people who are hit. So the top five corridors in terms of collisions per mile are East Broadway from Jackson to Cedar, North Pacific from California to Ivy, South Glendale from Maple to Cypress, Colorado from Brand to Kenwood, and Glendale from Doran to Broadway. So a concentration downtown, for sure, but spreading out into South Glendale and other parts of the city as well. So the data tells us a really important story. The other piece of this, though, is hearing from Glendale residents. What are Glendale residents experiencing? What are they feeling? What we heard is that safety needs to be the number one focus. We participated, we had our advisory committee, as I mentioned, who met 10 times. We hosted a number of pop-up events as we were starting the plan. We hosted three walkabouts, which is essentially a group of people out walking short routes and evaluating what they're seeing and experiencing in terms of the walking conditions. And city staff participated in Seculvia that happened here in June. So we've heard a lot from people and have done a lot of different activities to get their feedback. The number one thing that we've heard, as I mentioned, is safety. People want cars to slow down. This is a representation of one of the first outreach activities we did, where we asked people to choose a color based on what would get them walking more. The bluish hues are really safety-related choices that people were making. Of more than 700 responses, we had about 150 people say that their number one reason that would get them walking more is if vehicles would slow down. The other things that are important to people are having more places to walk, building on what's already good in Glendale, and then maintaining the system that exists. So that's our framework. We understand our challenges. We understand what people want to see. So what should we do about it? The first thing that we did was to articulate the vision. What are we trying to do in terms of improving walkability and safety in Glendale? So we set a vision that Glendale is going to be a great place to walk, leading to a community that is safer, healthier, more sustainable, and economically vibrant. We established four goals to help us achieve that vision. And those goals really carry through into the program recommendations that we're making, as well as the policy recommendations in the plan. So we focus on making walking safer. That's very safety-focused, obviously. The second goal is creating connected and complete communities. So that gets to having more destinations for people to walk, really focusing on those pedestrian priority areas. Goal three is about building walkable places for all. So whether you are walking, whether you're in a wheelchair or using another mobility device, whether you're 70 or whether you're seven, having the ability to walk safely around the city. And then the fourth goal is focused a little bit more internally and focusing on organizing the city for implementation and giving the city an action plan to move forward with this, with safety projects. The next key piece of this was thinking about where we target our investments. So to identify areas where walking investments would have a pretty significant impact, we layered together three different pieces of the analysis that we did. We focused heavily on safety, in keeping with what we've heard from people. We also looked closely at equity. Where are there people that may have a greater need to walk? Because they don't have a car, because they are older or younger and no longer drive, because they have a disability. And then we looked at demand. Where are people walking today? Where are the destinations? And where would we expect to see more people walking? We layered those together. And what you see in the blue map is some hotspots. Those darkest blue areas are the places where those three factors really come together. Those areas are just 4% of the city of Glendale's land area, but they represent 75% of the collisions that happen in the city. So again, this is about thinking how we can strategically target our limited resources so that they're having the greatest impact in reducing collisions and improving safety. We took that as our starting place and then started to develop different projects. So we focused on safety projects, really zooming in on each of those 17 corridors, trying to understand what is making collisions happen and what are the design solutions that we can use to address those. We looked at transit connections, so first-last-mile projects, projects that are getting people to and from the bus. And we also looked at safe routes to school projects. As I mentioned, the city has been incredibly successful at implementing, at first getting funding for and then implementing safe routes to school projects, but there's certainly more to do there. And we know that kids are overrepresented. Next is thinking about the toolbox. So what are the specific solutions that we can use to improve safety, especially on those safety corridors? This graphic gives you a sense of a few of the things that we combined together to develop projects. So at an intersection, we know that left turns and right turns are times when people get hit. We can look at changing our signals so that we're using an exclusive turn phase for vehicles going left, so that people aren't trying to cross when vehicles are turning. In some cases, we can look at removing right turns on red so that, again, cars are not turning as people are trying to cross the street. We can look at extending our curbs, using bulb-outs or curb extensions to shorten the crossing distance, which means people are less exposed or are exposed for a shorter distance. And then we can also look at doing some of the things, really doubling down on some of what Glendale's already doing. More high-visibility crossings, the rectangular rapid flashing beacons, median islands for pedestrians. So as we dig into each of those safety corridors, we use this toolbox as a starting place and look specifically at the types of collisions that are happening in each location so that we are targeting the improvements and the recommendations to address the specific issue. All of that comes together across these project types and has resulted in, I want to say, we probably have 60 or 70 specific project recommendations included in the plan. We've identified places where there are missing sidewalks, where there are missing curb ramps, so accessibility improvements. And then we've identified costs that go with each of those safety corridor projects as well. We looked at what can be done in the first five years, what needs to wait a little bit longer, so the next six to 10 years, and then what happens beyond that, 11 years or out. So what this graphic shows you is just how we would look at phasing some of these projects. There are early actions that can be done that build on what the city's already doing that don't require a significant amount of additional funding. So things like signal timing, continuing to mark high-visibility crossings when roadways are restriped. Those types of projects can be done pretty quickly and cheaply. Some of the longer-term projects, these big safety corridor projects, can be done in pieces and should get started now, but it's going to take a while to complete all of them. I mentioned some of these quick wins, these early implementation actions. So nobody is going to come up with, I think our initial price tag on this was about $60 million to cover the safety corridor projects and a number of the others that are included in the plan. Nobody is looking to the City Council to say, we need $60 million tomorrow, because that's just not going to happen. So part of the phasing is thinking through what are the most important things and what can be done really affordably. So when we think about quick wins, I mentioned the crosswalks, traffic control and signal timing, easy to do, relatively speaking, within the city's existing budget, because it's an operational change. There are also things that can be done with paint and with posts to create temporary curb bulbs, temporary improvements that allow us to test some of the ideas that are included in the plan and can be done before funding for a full roadway reconstruction is available. The other key piece of the plan and our recommendations that I want to highlight is around the program, policy, and procedure side of things. So projects are critical, but there's a lot more to improving safety than just building infrastructure. When we think about programs and policies and procedures, we try to focus on what is important externally in terms of some programs like Safe Routes to School, maybe a Safe Routes for Seniors program. But then also, what are some of the city's policy changes that might be needed? Changes in the day-to-day procedures that are going to make a big difference. One of our key recommendations is developing a program, which is something that many cities have done, around the idea of Vision Zero, which is about eliminating fatalities and serious injuries from the city's roadways. There are a lot of ways to do this, but at the heart of it, it takes an action plan that is focused on not only the infrastructure pieces we've just talked about, but also education, enforcement, and changes to city policies and procedures. So that ties in with the Be Streets Smart Glendale campaign I mentioned earlier, but also includes the opportunity to look at things like speed reduction policies citywide. You already do some reduced speeds downtown, along Brand Boulevard, for example, around schools, but looking at other areas of the city where it might make sense to slow people down a bit can be an important part of this. Another piece that I think is particularly germane to your work as the Planning Commission is thinking about a revamp of the city's complete streets policy. There is a complete streets policy that exists, but there is an opportunity to have that adopted by council ordinance and then really take it through to implementation. So to be able to set review guidelines and implementation checklists that go along with that to help the city deliver complete streets. And then also think about how that can be an element of delivering on pedestrian priority streets, which was a promise of the downtown-specific plan. So each of the policies, programs, and procedures that we have included in the plan has a phasing associated with it, just like the projects, and also has a list of partners, targeted actions, and who needs to be part of helping to implement them. So with the draft plan complete, what happens now? Well, our next piece is, as Justin mentioned, we're really ready to launch the public review and comment for this. So we are planning to officially start that on October 2 with an interactive pop-up that we will be doing in the passeo, the Central Park passeo, over lunchtime. And we are going to be sharing with people the results of some of the, obviously, what's in the plan, but also sharing with them that community mural that was created early on that really pointed to safety as a key focus. So this will be a way for people to engage with us. We will have the plan, of course, available online for the month of October and would invite people to review and provide comment that way. And so the conclusion, then, of the public review process will likely be with a presentation to the Transportation and Parking Commission. And then we will complete plan revisions over the course of November and ultimately take the plan to City Council for adoption, likely in early 2018. With that, I would welcome any questions or comments that you have.
You know, we have those crosswalks that has a diagonal crossing where all cars come to stop. I think that was like, I don't know if it's experimental thing or what, but have we looked at maybe expanding that? Because, you know, we have all the cars stopped, so that prevents, you know, any cars making turns or, you know, any type of accidents that might happen.
You're right. So an all-way walk or a pedestrian scramble is what that's called when we allow people to cross in any direction and there are no cars moving. Yeah, there is one right downtown. And in areas where you've got really high pedestrian volumes, it does work quite well, because you just get people moving. You don't have to worry about turns. And so that is the kind of improvement that is included in the plan. We have not identified additional specific locations where we would recommend that, but have basically said, you know, in very high volume, walking areas, in areas where you've got a lot of turns, it makes sense to look at doing the pedestrian scramble. And then really going a step further to what's downtown and actually painting the diagonals so that people understand, oh, hey, I can go in whatever way I please at this point.
One more question. You mentioned $60 million high price tag on this project here. And obviously, you know, when it goes to City Council, they have to, I guess, find where the money is going to come from. Is this kind of phased, in phases over so many years? You know, and if that's the case, and then, you know, what sets the priorities and so on? I guess, you know, the priorities is that the highest, you know, I guess, collision area will get the, you know, the projects will go first. I looked at some of the projects where you say it's not part of the, you know, including the funding. So is that, all those projects include that $60 million? Or because the numbers are not identified here?
Right. Only the projects that have numbers included are part of that $60 million. So for example, the Safe Routes to School projects, we did not include costs for, because the city has already funded those for the most part. There may be a few small things. Some of the first-last-mile projects, so those connections to transit, we did not include a cost for those, because you have to do, working through the metro process and the SCAG process. You do what's called a first-last-mile study to identify the improvements that are needed. So there's another step to identify some of those projects. That $60 million price tag, you're right, we have phased. We're looking at a 20-year plan. And the way that the projects were prioritized was based on those factors I mentioned, the safety, the equity, and the demand. So where do we have people walking today to be able to say, in the first five years, try and tackle these, because they are going to have the greatest impact in terms of improving safety and helping the city move towards some of its other goals? The other key piece is the city has been incredibly successful at securing grant funding. And so we've teed up a number of the projects so that they're ready for the city to apply for grants and then tried to identify some lower-cost things that can be part of those first five years as well, so that there's progress being made, even though funding is going to come in phases.
Thank you.
The data that you provided, do you compare Glendale to other city streets? So you're saying how we're going to compare to other cities?
It's a good question. So yes, early on, we did look at the way that Glendale stacks up against particularly some other California cities. If, and I'm not going to remember the number off the top of my head, but I want to say, in the list of California cities, and Justin and Fred, help me if I don't remember this exactly right, Glendale ranks number 97 in terms of safety, which is quite low overall. We did not do a year-by-year comparison in terms of collisions with other peer cities, in part because the general feeling is that one collision or one fatality is one too many. And so even though the state of California kind of looks at how cities stack up against one another on an annual basis, and Glendale historically has not looked too good in that measure, we didn't go into, you know, in 2013, this happened in Glendale and this happened in LA, because the scale is a little bit off.
If I remember right, there was under two incidents that people died in accidents that had a collision.
Over the course, so there are about 100 pedestrian-involved collisions each year.
Oh, yeah.
When we are looking at the number of fatalities over the course of, let's say, 2004 to 2013, it is a much smaller number. We are more in the neighborhood of like 25 deaths over that period of time. But yeah, the average in terms of number of collisions involving pedestrians each year is right around 100.
100, yeah. Okay. The other question I have is your sampling methods. I mean, when you do this study, when you want to make some decisions, so you have some samples, and then based on those samples, you make some plannings. Now, Glendale has something like maybe over 200,000 population, and we know that the population are comprised of different groups, different nationalities, different language-speaking people. So how do you focus those information gathering if you want to be complete? I mean, how do you expand your visions in order to, because some of those people probably they even don't know good English, maybe the signs are very new for them, so how do you challenge that?
Yeah. That is, I'm so glad that you brought that up because it is a particularly important element of Glendale to be aware of, the fact that we have people who are relatively new to the US, we have people who are certainly new to Glendale, and people who speak a lot of different languages. So part of what we did to gather a broader set of information, first off, we like to use activities that anybody can participate in. So the first activity that I showed the quilt from where people are choosing three things that are important to them, we staff those activities with people who speak multiple languages whenever we can, and it really is intended to be something very simple so that even if you don't understand the word pedestrian, you can understand what it means to feel comfortable or feel safe walking. The other and more important piece, I would say, in terms of being able to have direct contact with folks in multiple languages, was we had the good fortune of working on this project at the same time the safety education initiative was underway. So that's the B Streets Mark Glendale Campaign. As part of their early work, we shared some surveys. They had surveys translated into Spanish and Armenian, and they also did focus groups in Spanish and Armenian. So we were able to talk to people directly in their own language and understand a bit more about what's important to them when it comes to pedestrian safety and walking.
Okay. When you say, "Speak with people," how do you expose to all people? Maybe you will have some announcements, some written materials, or maybe some TV programs. But how are you, I mean, how you can be confident that whatever that you're putting out, everybody is reading it, everybody knows. So what is that, how do you challenge that?
What does that look like going forward? Sure. So one of the things that we know is with any plan, not everyone is going to read it. So what we need people to know is what is the most important message? And again, this is a nice tie to the Safety Education Campaign where they are putting out radio advertisement, TV advertisement, billboards, signs, materials in three different languages.
In Channel 6? Is there the place that you put that?
They have done Channel 6 as well, yes. And I believe--
And TV Armenian as well. We've been on the radio in more than one language. We've been doing specific community meetings, reaching out to groups through the churches, through community organizations, that sort of thing, in multiple languages. Most of our outreach material is produced in at least three languages through this effort. You may have seen billboards, you may have seen some of the high-visibility goody bags that we've been handing out at public outreach opportunities that have our message in three languages on it, and when folks take that bag and they walk around with it as they go about their business, our message is being spread in those three languages, the message of pedestrian safety and awareness.
That's good. The other question, you mentioned it already several times about public education, because no matter what kind of good plan you come up with, if that plan don't go out and people don't digest it, it's not going to work. So your plan, I think your planning or public education probably will be one of the most needed to accomplish what you're planning. So are you comfortable with those plannings?
Yes, I think so. I think that we, one of the things that we will do is as we move through the outreach process for the draft plan, we'll evaluate who we're hearing from and how many people we're hearing from, and whether we feel like we're getting the exposure that we need, we certainly have the ability to extend the time for public comment and outreach if it's something that we need to do. You know, I think part of what we want to be thoughtful about as we are telling the story of this plan and why it needs to matter to people is what are the benefits that you get? So we can say, "Well, you should go slower because it makes people, it's safer, it's going to reduce collisions." But even with some of these very specific improvements, with some of these very specific improvements, we can tie them directly to benefits, and I think that's important for people as we talk about changing their roadways and changing a little bit of what the city looks like as well.
That's good. And my last question, it's about drivers, because one side of this whole scenario is people who are walking, the other side is drivers. Now, what are you going to do to stop those drivers that they're not doing what they're supposed to? More penalties, penalizing them, getting their driver license, I mean, taking from them for a couple of months or something? Is there something that can make them really to get this serious?
We think that it takes a really coordinated approach. And so again, this is a place where having the Safety Education Campaign happening at the same time that we're doing the pedestrian plan is important because in most cases, when we look at the collision data, drivers are the ones who are at fault in most cases, right? And so you're hitting on the crux of it. We need to get people to slow down, we need to get them to pay attention, not be looking at their phones, and generally drive safer. So we think that takes a holistic approach focused on both the engineering solutions. So there are things that we can do to our roadways to slow people down, to make it safer. There is enforcement, which is a huge part of it. So Glendale Police Department has been involved throughout this process. They were part of our advisory committee. We've met with them a number of times, especially in digging through the collision data. And then the education piece tied to the safety education is also really important. But you have to use that carrot-and-stick approach, right? And it can't all be, sometimes there do have to be penalties for bad behavior, and so having the police department as a partner in this has been important.
Thank you.
One of the commissioners' train's remarks regarding reaching out to different communities, I don't know if your efforts included Asian communities. We do have a big population here. Combined, Filipinos and Koreans is over 10%, which is significant. So I don't know what efforts have you made to reach out to them. During your studies, I do not, I did not hear anything that you made that effort.
We have not translated materials into either of those languages, and that's something that we can absolutely look to do as we're ready to head into the next phase.
I would add that as part of the Citywide Safety Education Initiative, some of the specific publicity work that's been done around getting the message out was done in a, and I don't recall the name of it, but one of the Filipino community newspapers that has circulation here in the city of Glendale. And Asian populations, Asian Pacific Islander populations within Glendale are specifically included within the equity analysis. So communities of color are one of the components of that. And so when we're talking about how do we focus our resources, our efforts, our planning on, you know, where the need is the greatest, that's specifically one of the considerations.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So, as I read it, no action required. And, very good. That was a very good presentation. Thank you very much. Moving on to Planning Commission items, number two, case number PZC 1720109. Location, citywide, applicant, city of Glendale, staff, Ms. Stotler.
Thank you, Chairman Nukian, members of the Planning Commission. We have an item for density bonus amendments. We've had, since about the last 10 years, we've had a code section that includes density bonus. It was adopted SB 1818 a number of years ago, and ever since then, they've been amending the code and updating it at the state level. But what we have not done is kept up with amendments in our own code. So just to give a quick overview, a density bonus is an incentive offered to a developer to build affordable housing consisting of one or a combination of additional residential units, a waiver of zoning regulations, and/or reduced parking requirements. In exchange for getting the density bonus, for us to be able to count it toward affordable housing, we would need some sort of a covenant recorded on a property to ensure affordability for a certain timeframe. Under California Sections of the Government Code 65915 to 65918, there have been six amendments that have occurred since 2015 to 2016. We know that there are definitely amendments planned this year as well. We don't know exactly what's going to be signed by the governor. So this is a rapidly changing area of law, so we may be bringing this back to you shortly, but because there have been so many extensive amendments, we want to bring the code up now. We have a lot of interest in building affordable housing. There was a negative declaration that has been done by council a number of years ago. It's still applicable to these amendments. And again, the purpose of amending the ordinance now is just to bring it into conformance with state law. So there are definitions in the code, you'll see them. We've updated our definitions to match those of the state. We've actually done some clarification on calculation of density bonuses. You'll see that in the ordinance. Again, it's just reflecting what's been in at the state. When it comes to the amount of density bonus, what we are changing is to include transitional foster youth, disabled veterans, and homeless persons as groups that can be served by a density bonus. There's a certain, they get certain considerations. And then we also have a provision in our density bonus that if somebody is asking for a density bonus beyond what is allowed by the state, the maximum allowed by the state, that would be subject to a council approval. So we have findings, we have incentives or concessions. Based on your level of affordability, there's a certain number of incentives or concessions that a developer is entitled to. You could think of them as, we used to think of them as variances, although because the state law has changed, these are things they get, developer will get. It's basically changes to our development standards or modifications to development standards to encourage them to develop affordable housing, so it's a trade-off. The more affordability they provide, the more affordable units, the more incentives or concessions the developer is entitled to. We also have parking concessions. If someone builds any kind of affordable housing that meets any of those state requirements, 20% low or 10% very low, they are entitled to get a parking reduction. And again, a parking reduction is changing. If you're familiar with our code, the way it was originally, basically the lowest amount of parking you would have, if you had a one-bedroom, you could have one parking space, although now it's changing. If you are within a half-mile of a transit stop and there is a map behind you that we've prepared so you can see which areas in the city are covered by that, if they're within one-half mile of a transit spot, they only need .5 spaces per bedroom if they're building 20% low or 10% very-low income housing. And there's been a lot of interest in that provision. Those are the populations we really need to serve for affordable housing, so that state change then will be reflected in our code. We also have issues going on for 100% rental for low-income families if they're, again, within a half-mile of a major transit stop with unobstructed access, then the parking spaces, again, is .5 spaces per unit. So that's a little bit different. Before, it was .5 spaces for 20%, 10% low, 20% low, 10% very low. If it's 100% rental, then it's .5 for the whole unit. And then senior parking, it's also .5 spaces per unit if they have access within a half-mile of a bus route that operates eight times or more daily. And that, there's another map up there which also shows you where those corridors are Oh, I do want to point out one thing. For major transit stops versus corridors, a major transit stop is located along an existing rail station. It's an intersection where there's two or more major bus routes with a 15-minute or less headway during peak hours. And a major transit stop is also designated by Southern California Association of Governments' Regional Transportation Plan. I know you're probably familiar with that because you've heard it before, RTPSES, that's what that document is. What they're, the purpose of, as being consistent with RTPSES, we're trying to mix or relate where transportation is to housing. And one of the things you're going to see later on as part of the South Glendale Community Plan is where we're looking at having an affordability corridor that would be in relation to where we have transit, a lot of those same corridors that are shown on that map. And then we also have high-quality transit corridors. Those are corridors with fixed bus service with 15-minute or less headways during peak commute hours. You'll probably be hearing that shortly also when we talk about the South Glendale Community Plan and other transportation projects. So affordability is changing also with the state law. It used to be a 30-year affordability, now it's a 55-year affordability term for for-sale units. First owner must meet affordable housing costs, they have to qualify. Subsequent owners may or may not. The city will have the ability to enforce equity-sharing agreements on ownership units. And also, an applicant who wants to build an affordable project is ineligible for a density bonus or concessions if the development is proposed on property that has affordability restrictions currently or is populated by low-income tenants. So the idea is not to have a density bonus that will come in and encourage a developer to move low-income tenants. We want to, if they do move low-income tenants, we want to make sure that those tenants will be able to afford to be in that building again whenever it's updated. And that's just a general, a general rule is for the eligibility is that a density bonus or concessions are ineligible where you already have rental dwelling units having affordability restriction now or within the last five years, where units are occupied by lower or very-low income households unless, again, those affordable units are replaced or it's 100% affordable project. So when it comes to replacement units, where units are occupied on the date of application, the project must provide the same number of units of equivalent size to be made available at affordable rents or affordable housing costs to and occupied by persons in the same or lower-income category as households in occupancy. So again, the idea is want to make sure that we're not dislocating anybody. Where the income category of a household in occupancy or previous occupants is unknown, then it shall be presumed that lower-income rental households occupied the units in the same proportion as lower-income rental households to all households in Glendale as determined by the Housing Urban Development Housing, Comprehensive Housing Affordability Database. And those are currently estimated for Glendale at 67% low. So if somebody comes in, they want to convert, they already have units, the assumption is 67% of whatever that building is, is low-income. So that's the number of units that need to be replaced. We also have provisions for condo conversions for low-income housing development. A density, if somebody has a density bonus, they can ask to convert it if 33% of the total units are affordable to lower moderate income or 15% of the total units are affordable to lower income and the applicant pays administrative costs incurred by the city. The city may require conditions which assure continued affordability to subsequent purchasers who are low, moderate, or lower-income households. And again, a density bonus would be ineligible if a condo is proposed on property with rental or dwelling units that have affordability restrictions for lower, very-low income now or within the last-- or within the last five years, or if the units are occupied by lower or very low-income households unless, again, those affordable units are replaced or the project is 100% affordable. For conversion, density bonus means an increase in units of 25% over the maximum number of apartments currently permitted in the general plan. And that would be provided within an existing structure or structures proposed for conversion. The reason this is important for us is because we've had downzonings that occurred in the 1980s. We have many multifamily apartments that are built at densities that are above our existing general plan. And we had an issue where people had come in wanting to convert their apartments to ownership. But because they were over-density, they couldn't meet the findings for subdivision. As you're aware, when someone comes in and makes a subdivision request, the first finding you make is that it's consistent with the general plan. If they're over-density, you can't make that finding. And so affordable housing might be a way where a condo or apartment owner can create condos. It's just a percentage of them would need to be affordable. But again, a city is not required to convert apartments to condominiums. And all conversions of them would be subject to the subdivision map act just as any division is. So we have provisions for density bonus housing plans and housing agreements. You'll see as part of the ordinance that we've prepared. We've already had provisions for that. We've just reordered them in our ordinance because a housing plan is required first. That's where a developer comes and says, this is what we think... This is the deal that we're proposing. We want this number of affordable units. And we, in exchange, we would like this number of total units for the project. They tell us what the affordability level is. They tell us what types of incentives or concessions they're looking for. And they also tell us who's living in the units now. We check, does it have affordability restrictions? So that you think of it as... It's... the housing plan is really the plan for how density bonus will work for each individual development as it comes in. The density bonus housing agreement is what implements it. When somebody gets a entitlement, the first thing they would need to do is have an agreement that is recorded against the property that makes it real for not only the owner but anybody who would subsequently buy the property. They're all in notice that there's an affordability requirement on those units. And we have a new section that we're adding to our code, commercial development incentives for affordable housing. It's actually been in state law for a while, but it hasn't actually been in our code. This would allow a commercial and affordable housing developer to get together to partner on an affordable housing project. Right now, there's a sunset on it, January 1st, 2022, but it could be extended. So we don't know if there's any interest in this. We haven't seen this come in Glendale. And we're not aware of other projects, but it is in the state law. And then we also have some clarification on our charts. Again, our chart's already in the code, but again, clarifying that housing density bonus for seniors is 20%. And we're also adding density bonus categories for the transitional foster youth, homeless persons, and disabled veterans. And as the last part, we have density bonus application procedures and submittal requirements. State law was recently changed and say we'd actually have to have those written down. We did include a copy in your packet. We have a draft set of written rules that would just say, here's how we're going to process these in accordance with the Permit Streamlining Act. And again, that we would have to have a density housing plan reviewed by our housing experts prior to or concurrent with an actual entitlement approval. And again, we would not issue a building permit until we actually have a housing agreement recorded on the property. And the purpose of having agreements and having numbers associated with development is so we can track the affordable housing. The only way we get credit for affordable housing with the state is if there's actually a covenant on the property. So even those people may be renting out units at an affordable level, and they may be renting to lower-income households. We don't get any credit for that from the state. And the only thing that makes it real for the state is actually having that agreement on the property, similar to where you've heard before, or you will soon hear, about ADUs, accessory dwelling units. We have a process for that. Even if there's no fee, may or may not be a fee, we still want to have a permit on there so we can track it. And again, the staff recommends that the planning commission recommend approval or adoption of these amendments to the city council to bring Glendale zoning code into conformance with state density bonus law. I'm here to answer any questions you may have about them.
I have one quick question. You prefaced your presentation by saying that you expect that state laws relating to this topic will change. And once that happens, you will be coming back with changes to the Glendale City Municipal Code which reflect those. Is there... and I'm not trying to be lazy here, but is there a way of automating that? Such that, you know, the Glendale City Municipal Code will automatically reflect the state of California provisions?
No, we review every law as it comes through the state and make sure that we tailor it to our code and tailor it to Glendale. We don't take them wholesale. We absolutely review every one.
Okay.
And it's just a matter of the fact that housing is a hot topic in the state. Right now, it has been for the last several years. And I believe in the last session, there were over 100 housing bills that were proposed and looked at by our governor or legislature. So right now, there's a handful that are up there at state law. So we expect that they will be changing within the next... Well, it has to change before October 15th if he's going to sign them. So we don't know exactly what he will or won't sign, but we know it'll be quick. But how quick we get to it, I don't know. We will definitely... we want to adopt these now because we know these are adopted. We know this is the law. And if we have to tweak it again, we'll be back to tweak it.
Any anticipation as to what is up there in Sacramento in terms of the measures being considered?
There's a lot of measures being considered. I don't want to speculate on what he may or may not sign.
Were there any questions?
You know, yeah, I think we're going in the right direction by adopting this density bonuses and parking reductions and so on to create incentives for affordable housing. You know, some of the questions that I get from some of the people that I know are always on either senior housing shortages and/or affordable housing shortages. So this is the right step. Compared to our neighboring cities like Los Angeles, they seem to be more generous in their bonuses and incentive menu items. For example, like transportation, if it's nearby mass transit, they actually, you know, give the ratio to 0.3 to one bed. Have you looked at that? Their transportation incentive, you know, if it's nearby their transit area. And some of the menu also incentives, sometimes if it's frozen really close nearby, doubles the, you know, the densities and so on. So these are the things that is more aggressive towards these developers to, I guess, lure them into Los Angeles for this type of density, I mean, affordable housing. Because affordable housing, you know, I talked to developers, it's not a really money-making business. So they do need a lot of incentives. They do need a lot of help from municipalities and, you know, from Glendale. So is this something that... I know that this is ready to go before the council, but, you know, for future maybe plans, you know, to take a look at to see if we can create a little bit more incentives so that we can have this affordable housing, you know, lure more develops to get into affordable housing development.
Yeah, what we proposed just mirrors what's in state law. We didn't go beyond that.
Yeah, my question is, there are terminologies used in this few pages about low income. Sometimes it says low income. Some paragraphs, we have very low income. And then you also have very, very low income. What's the difference between those three different groups?
Let me see if I remember them all. There's low income, and low income is 80% of the median. And then very low income is 50% of the median income. And then there's extremely low income, which you'll see in the housing element. That is 50% of the very low income. So there are different categories. There's also lower income. There's low income and lower income. Lower income is anybody low income or less. And then we also have moderate income. Moderate income goes up to 120% of median income. You look at our housing element, although it's not in state law, but our housing element actually defines workforce housing. And workforce housing is 120% to 165% of median income. So we do have a graduated scale of what we can approve development for. So when we talk about affordable housing, we're looking at targeting lower income. That would be low income, very low income, and extremely low income for renters. And then moderate income and for sale units. And I should say, for sale units can actually be for any income level. It could be for moderate and lower income as well.
So is there a dollar amount somewhere?
It's a dollar amount.
What is low income? What is lower income?
And it fluctuates based on whatever the area median income is.
And then...
And household size.
If somebody cannot produce some documents that, what is his income? How are you going to define that? Is it low income?
Yeah, there's... I don't know the particulars of how they actually calculate it out because I don't work in housing. But that is why we do have the housing agreement as well as the housing plan because we do have housing experts, and that is what they do. They go through and they determine what the affordable units price will be if it's for sale and also affordable rents for each of the different projects that come through the city that have an affordability covenant on them.
There is a pretty rigorous process for qualifying for these units, and our housing department does that part of it, not planning. But what they do is they initially get a list of eligible households. And then there's a lottery. And once those names are pulled, they do some extensive checking on... in form of documentation, pay stubs, income taxes, whatever documentation they need to establish that they fall within those income categories. And only then are they qualified and they receive the unit.
I see. And then how about the developers? Are they also... do they have some sort of criteria that how those people are being selected or appointed? Or what is the procedure? I mean, anybody can come and say, I can develop this property, and then I'm going to go through these credits that I can get? Is there a way to... That they have to qualify for it or just by claiming that I can do it?
Well, if you have a developer who's interested in building affordable housing, they put together a package, just like any developer would put together a package of how they're performing, how are they actually going to be able to finance it and build the numbers of units. And it's up to the developer to propose the affordability level. So the developer decides if he wants to build very low or low income or moderate income. He decides if it's going to be renter or special needs housing or senior housing. So that decision is not up to city staff. That's a developer coming to us, and that's part of what's in the housing plan. So a developer comes, puts forward his proposal. And that is the housing plan. That's what we review with staff. That's what we have discussions on with the developer because we want to make sure that the developer is successful and as well as meeting our housing needs. So, you know, nobody wants a project that's not successful for everyone. So we do work on that. And we also look at what concessions or incentives the applicant is or developer is proposing in order to make that project work.
So who qualifies that? It's not the planning department, so it's housing?
It's housing.
So they will say that, yes, this developer has all the qualification who can go through this project?
Yes, and they determine whether or not the levels of affordability are met.
I see.
Yeah.
And sometimes they partner up with the nonprofits. The developers will to come in as a team to build on these affordable housing projects.
So I had another question for major transition stuff. You already explained that. I know what that means.
Yeah, there is a map behind you. We do, again, that can change when our bus routes change. So if anybody comes in and they're asking about affordable housing, we show them the map too so they can look at what kind of parking incentives would be applicable to their projects.
Okay, if there are no more comments or questions, I am willing to entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Give me a second. There's a motion...
We have a revised motion.
There's a revised motion. Okay.
Can I move that upon consideration of the proposed ordinance? And after reviewing the previously adopted negative declaration records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said zoning code amendment case number 1720109 to amending Chapter 30.36 Density Bonus Incentives of the Glendale Municipal, the planning commission hereby recommends that the city council adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 30.36 Density Bonus Incentives.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Planning Commissioners, leave.
Aye.
Yes. Yes. With that, we move on to item eight, Community Development Department Updates.
I have no updates.
We have none. Do we have any comments from commissioners? Hearing none, we adjourn. We are adjourned.